I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now here a motion to adopt this agenda.
Don't move.
Second?
I'm second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda. Moving down to...
Will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
A second.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move down to guest speaker's communications informational items. One thing we have here is open house Lake County Crisis Center. It will be Thursday, October 26th at 9:00 to 11:00. And at 9:00 AM. Let's go on down to seventy-second annual gala.
Oh, we just put a little invitation in there.
Oh, good, does this save the date?
Yep, yes, I did.
Thank you.
Yeah, January 13th, we moved it a little bit. So it's Great Gatsby, so we're requiring a dress up at the nineteen-twenty. Yeah, so it should be really fun, at the Elvis like normal, yeah. Yeah, it'll be very exciting.
And for those that hasn't been to one, it's a great time. I enjoy it. Sign me up.
Perfect, we'll put you down.
For two.
Oh, alright.
Okay, we also have a letter from Safe. Berta, you met with Safe just...
Right, every year we do get a dividend back, you know, on our workers' comp. And then we just met with them last week on our, for this next year, on our rates and everything. So I believe we'll have a, probably a little bit larger dividend possibly next year with recoded, I can't say we, Shelley's been recoding some stuff to make sure the proper codes are in for all the workers' comp, you know, people, so I think it would be better. And if you have more to add, you're more than welcome to add something.
Well, just the audit that they're currently doing is a look back for the previous year. So we paid the full year's anticipated workers' comp fees upfront. And based on the results of that audit, we may get a refund this year on last year's workers' comp fees in addition to the dividend. And then it also sets the piece for next year. So it could be a double paying, a little bit of money this year plus a rate for next year.
Next you will have in your bag a letter. I don't know who wrote it, but it's, the name anonymous, about pit bulls on South G Street.
Have you actually had complaints? Travis on this particular matter?
I haven't seen the letter.
Three twenty-eight South G Bulldogs.
To pit dog.
You know, the ones that we've been dealing with.
We did recently issue citations to some people about one dog getting loose and biting someone. And we did address that issue then. The owner was cited for a dog at large.
You don't know, remember if it was this address or...
It is.
Yeah, it sounds right.
It is, it's the same person.
Okay.
So it sounds as though our police department is handling this issue.
We are, but I'm not so sure that this isn't something that maybe we want to look at because we have a lot of them running around, don't we?
Pit bulls? And we have the one that's now your neighbor's dog.
Yeah.
They've been cited as well. There were some other ones that were down on South Ninth Street that were impounded. And those are the only ones that I'm aware of.
So I don't know if a lot's a lot, you know, but I don't know, it was just...
Well, if there's a danger, one's too many.
And it's any kind of dog, and I don't think it's just a pit bull that's any kind of dog.
Particular type.
Yeah. I know some cities have aggressive dogs, you know, claws in there. If you have an aggressive type of dog, you have to have different insurance. But that's kind of a hassle because those of us, and I know that some of us have raised aggressive dogs, and it's not always the dog, it's the owner. So, you know, but I wanted to put this in your package as for information.
That there's problems that are...
Yeah.
Well, I know we have a very old dog ordinance. It's been around for a couple of twenty or more years. Maybe we need to look at that with all the other ones we're looking at. I think that's probably a good idea because I'm sure it's activated.
I think we need to get that up and running as soon as possible and get it into paper so people can see it and be informed. And let the radio stations announce it because I see a lot of dogs running around town and some with claws and some without.
So can I bring a suggestion up? No. I will post a dog ordinance outside. And also maybe post at Safeway so that, because there's a spot there at Safeway that you can hang them up and just put like on a flyer, there is a dog, you know, something about being a dog ordinance, police come to town hall and pick up and, you know, just something so that it is out there. And then give the police officers copies too, they can hand out as they see the little dog. He's in, I know the owners. Just a suggestion.
I know we've got to do something. We don't have a dog catcher anymore and I don't know what the, I really don't know what the deal was with why, because it was contracted with the city and the county. And I don't...
Funding?
Funding, money.
That still is the problem.
Still is the problem.
And also housing, there used to be housing of the animals, well, for the town and the county out at the airport, and I don't think that's available.
That's not available anymore, that was deemed unfit, I think, at some point.
The expense, I guess, the funding.
Well, the funding, because they came through the vet's office and they've ordered them for a short period of time, but that's expensive.
Yes, it is.
And then if you have to have them put down or something, then...
And the other problem with the vet's office is if the dog's behind on shots and the owner doesn't have the ability to pay, they'll give the dogs the shots and bill the city.
Bill the town.
Yeah, and so it becomes our responsibility and still release the dog back to the owner.
A lot of sense.
I think it's something we need to think about and...
Well, look at that.
I'm sorry?
Update it if dogs are biting people especially.
Yeah, we'll look at that dog ordinance.
No, I didn't have it. You did?
I just now started.
We can watch the video.
Yes, we will watch the video.
Thanks, Berta.
Thank you.
Let's move on down to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
He's hired.
Yeah, he wants to say something.
I actually have a question. So you talk about the ordinance, is that different than the state law that has been around for god only knows how long?
We have an ordinance.
Ordinances are adopted by the city. And so it's a...
State statutes and town ordinances.
Yeah, so it's basically city law.
Okay. Then I'm, that's it, I'm good.
Kenny? Any other public comment?
On anything but that being dogs.
I, I... I'm just a little, when I was here during the work session and listening to the motel tax, it seemed like you guys are, you know, with the percentage. I already explained where the chamber stood and I already discussed that with you guys. I am kind of newly concerned with your advisory that you were talking about. And I know that you're going to be doing that at a different time. I just wanted to say that I know that Mike had said that Lakeview is, needs to be on its own and separate from Lake County and the chamber kind of does Lake County. We're actually doing quite a lot of work in Lakeview and Lake County. And I'm going to just say this, that we have a lot of stuff in the works. We have a lot of things going on with tourism that will directly affect here, Lakeview, exactly. So I guess I'm most concerned, the chamber would be concerned or board would be concerned with, if we are going to completely separate that way or if we would hopefully be included so that we can make this, these, some of these decisions on tourism together and work together and not against each other. I just feel that with some of the discussions earlier, that you're, you're very, you know, on Lakeview and we are too, and we're doing a lot of work in Lakeview and in Lake County. But I just don't want us to work against each other. I want, you know, it seems like a pretty dandelion. We don't have any opposition with where you guys are standing with motel tax. We're just, I am most concerned on how the tourism is going to be spent. And I don't, I just, it worries me saying Lakeview and Lake County. It's been that way, you know, it's also the opposite. We at the chamber here, you only do Lakeview, you don't do Lake County. You haven't been out there, you haven't been this there, other places. It works both ways to whoever is thinking these things. So I just get worried that, I don't want to keep it separate. If you're bringing more money in and it's expected to go to tourism, I think that we should be really, really working together.
And I bet reiterates when we talked, when we first came to our meeting and when we started the work session on lodging tax. I think the two can complement each other in a big way. I think the town promoting itself as Lakeview and Lake County, because we're the county seat of Lake County. You know, I mean, so there, Lakeview has a lot of vested interests. Every citizen in Lakeview is a resident of Lake County. So yeah, the complementary of the two agencies working together.
I think it would just be easier for our members to get behind if, you know, chamber was involved in some kind of...
Well, that's what, and I mentioned a while ago that on many of the community's advisory boards, a member of the chamber or the executive director of the chamber is perhaps a member of the advisory boards because you could fill us in or whomever from the different, but that's what we'll decide.
Which I know will be later. I just wanted to just bring that up because it was just kind of something that I, I guess I was feeling I need to touch upon now before you guys do have your vote. And, you know, chamber obviously doesn't have any, we just want to be able to work with you and with our members and have tourism, you know, not work against each other, I guess, and not make it such a separate thing. We really want the greater good to the county and the town. So we're, I'm very hopeful that we'll be involved in some way. And I'll be able to report back to our members that we're concerned that originally discussed it with me, that this is, you know, where they're going with this and this is why. And be very transparent with all of your entities for tourism and, you know, everything in town and the county. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I guess.
Yeah, and like you say, tourism promotion is very fine lined. You can overspend in certain arenas and you can underspend in certain arenas. There are areas that are left out and you forget to promote that you could have gotten a large amount of people from. And so when we look at your budget and what you're spending your advertising and marketing dollars on, and you look at ours, like I say, those two should be able to complement. And the town might be able to fill in when the chamber doesn't have the budget to fill in and advertising Reno or wherever it might be. I'm just throwing out a market that you...
Yeah, and that would be obviously ideal, you know, that we complement each other and helping each other and just for the greater good of the community. You know, there are lots of different things that we can use tourism. We're focusing a lot right now on recreational tourism and are involved in travel Oregon and travel Southern Oregon. So I, I mean, I think that using both of those resources is fantastic as well. And it's just going to be an easier way for chamber to be, you know, on your guys' side too. I mean, it's going to be easier to talk to our members and still have their input and still be able to reflect their opinions with you guys.
I do think it will help what we're doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't want it to, I just don't want us to be pushing against each other. Yeah.
I would hope not.
Yeah. Well, and I don't think it would be purposeful. I mean, I mean, it just wouldn't, I just want there to be a good line of communication so that we don't accidentally mainly do that. You know, so that we're all kind of steering towards the same outcome.
This is why it's, it needs to be formed and a member from the chair. And I, I don't think it's just a member, I think it needs to be for someone.
The executive director, I would think.
Because then you speak for the whole body, not whether maybe one board member is giving more for themselves.
Yeah.
That's why I think it needs to be the executive director.
Well, I would be happy to do that, yeah, so that would be...
You don't have nothing else, can you bring the president along or...
Yeah, it may all be a public meeting, people are more than...
Yeah, anybody can add.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, let's go down to whole business. The lodging tax ordinance, which was eight-five-nine. We've discussed that and we'll hear a motion on it.
Before your motion, I, I'm still sticking to what I said. However, my vote will obviously be likely different because of the motion that's on the table. I'll just state that. But I'm more than, and I'm not going to make a motion, but my feeling is that we should be as a combined state and local tax somewhere in the ballpark of these other communities. And unfortunately, because there is a county, that limits the town greatly from at least where I feel we should be according to what I think will be the motion at the moment. Because I think we should be right at, not above as a combined. But I'm excited to at least thinking that this is my community of a community and it's, you know, something that's going to stick local, it's going to be well spent according to the way the advisory board thinks it should be.
Kenny? Anybody else? Want to hear a motion on it?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number eight fifty-nine, is that correct?
Yeah.
Motion to approve ordinance number eight fifty-nine as presented with the addition of the effective date, section eighteen that we were given by legal.
I think you need a motion to read it by title only first.
Okay, all right, that's good. I make a motion, or do you want to make that motion? Make a motion that we read the ordinance by title only so that the mayor doesn't have to read everything.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Title only.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number eight fifty-nine as presented with the addition of the effective date that was added by legal counsel, section eighteen, as presented. And the title is "An Ordinance Implementing a Six Percent Transient Lodging Tax, TLT", ordinance number eight fifty-nine.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next one is resolution of the LS Network Lease Agreement.
I need to table that. We'll bring the table that one.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jess.
Table document business. Which was eight sixty-one. Switch back and I'm in here. Which is the agreement on the zoning down there on North Fourth that Dawn Lasley has.
Is there an attachment to that, is this, no?
There is. It's fine, it's fine, but... Because even though the original is, I just got today.
Come on. Go here.
I missed the staff report.
It's just the ordinance.
Yeah, I just got that today, so.
Sorry. It's property, it's good. So where, just, can you just, since I missed the meeting when you discussed this before, where exactly is this Lasley property that was...
Between Third and Fourth Street, North Third and Fourth Street.
You know, our old Iron Horse Machine Shop used to be, right there. That whole area, right there.
Only half of the block between those both is commercial, the other half is residential. He's always been using that as commercial, so it just needs to act as his own. Which, yeah. People were notified, this kind of sense.
Well, it does.
And it's going to be storage units, which is again, the director, where it's some stuff.
I just wanted to know.
I'm good.
I think she wanted, the smoking ban first, that one is eight sixty and the other one eight sixty-one.
We can do this. Now we're waiting.
Yeah, the smoking ban is eight sixty. This is that, would she just get handed that to us?
I don't think we would.
Yeah, what we need to add that?
Please do that.
Can't wait for it, or do we have to wait till the next?
Now we'll have to wait because we did, when we adopted the agenda, yeah.
Then we need to change this one to eight sixty. Well, this, this one will go to the next meeting then. And put that back in my box.
Okay, so yeah, we'll add it to the next meeting.
Okay, Dawn, we changed one law now. It is eight sixty and the smoking ban will go to the next meeting.
Oh, the eight sixty.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance eight sixty, an ordinance made in a comprehensive plan map and zoning map. Ordinance number seven-seven-six by title only.
Come on, you have a second? I'll second. Motion is made and seconded. Adopting ordinance permitting comprehensive plan map and zoning map of town ordinance number seven-seven-six. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Well, it's title only. Now, make a motion to approve ordinance eight sixty. And the title, which is "An Ordinance Permitting a Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map of Town Ordinance Number Seven-Six."
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to carry?
Yeah.
Okay. For the mayor, council updates. Council have anything?
No, I do not.
I have three things. You guys have been up on E Street, light poles are being painted. That comes from the Occupy E Street funds. And Elcon Painting doing it. And then another thing is that Dawn has been going around and sending out letters to places that need to be cleaned up. And been a lot of places cleaning up their residents. Heard Travis hit one up yesterday and I went by there today. And it's a whole lot different. It's a whole lot different, so I appreciate all that. The other thing I wanted the council to know is I asked for Berta and Shelley for, on our budget, to give us an update of where we stand on our budget, what it looks like and keep us posted on that. So we should have that next month?
Yes.
Yes.
And just for information, we're going way back to when we first implemented Cassell. And it was never correctly, a lot of it wasn't entered correctly at that time. And then, you know, as we've gone through this last year, going from Cassell to the cloud, you had to go through a couple of steps. And there's just been a whole lot of things that never connected. And that's why you haven't got the financial year-to-date, you know, what we're spending for citigies and stuff. Because it isn't, hasn't been correct. Now Shelley's gone in and she's done, she's done a fabulous job to get things done. And we will have that to you next month. But it's been a nightmare and it's been, you know, Sam had it and Amy had it. And, I mean, it's just been a nightmare. It really honestly has, so we're getting, she's getting.
The last fiscal year cleaned up and ready to go by the middle of November. And then by the second or beginning of November, I'll have full financials for Q1, which is July through September of this fiscal year and on track to do other reports from now on.
Oh, we can't, because we didn't have...
Oh, that's right, we have, we have a couple comments.
Okay, looks like we need to...
Mayor, I had a couple of comments.
Boom, yeah.
I had a couple comments. I would, I received a call today from Dustin Gustafson or Gustavus. Anyway, and he, you know, they want to burn at Buller Canyon. And they, you know, our burning ordinance or our air quality is now in effect. Or will be as of the first. They haven't been able to get up there, but they were wanting to know if the council would let them do it or not. And it would have to be on a non-red, non-yellow day, like day or something, you know. But I told him I would get back to him. We don't want to jeopardize our air quality, but if he doesn't burn now, it's going to be harder next spring too.
So we asked him, do you have anything about that?
No, because I just got the call before.
So just check with them. I think as a consensus, we could probably say yes. Because the last day, Rachel and Peter kind of think that looks okay.
He's with the Oregon Department of Fourth Street. He's the, the Lake County.
And so they're burning out their property?
No, it's our property. But it's those piles that we have.
Oh, the, oh, the slash piles, in other words, okay.
And he wanted to burn, but they haven't had a chance. Now that they're getting close to in our, so it's either that or wait the spring. And then it's, you know, but either way, but I wanted to check, so I'll have Dawn double check tomorrow.
Really got to be careful. I mean, there was a lot of smoke around lately and I'm a rule. And a lot of that's prescribed burning. It's very concerning to me.
Well, but there's a lot of people burning leaves and stuff here and down and down.
Well, they can do it till what, November?
November first.
November first. And that Dawn just got that from the air quality class today and they went over that. So you might just let the council know.
That was a big thing that they discussed, that yes, they are burning outside of city limits, but it does affect us in town as well. Because even though the wind's not blowing, it sits there and it still comes into our meter. So we really need to be careful with that as well. And remind them that if they are burning, they do need to contact us. Because that can also help the PM... that if they are burning, they do need to contact us, because that can also help the PM two point five, and then I contact the National Weather Service, and then also DEQ, and that could also be our saving grace, because ODFW is burning, so that's affecting our air quality, which they could also give us a little bit of lenience, so if it does turn into a red day because of them burning, it's not gonna fall back on us. So, that was a huge saving grace, and something I was very thankful to hear. But we also, and I did get a letter from Forty St. Clair stating that they were burning, but it was okay for them to burn because it's open right now. It's already open, and it's open through November too. So, there was really nothing I could do, but I did appreciate the email. So, that was something that was new, so.
Well, like Darwin said, I think as long as the agency works with the weather really is the main thing, because this time of year, most of the winds are gonna go eastward, and so, we won't be affected, but.
When do they want to start?
Probably next week, but I don't know if they'll get it done. Two days next week, that'll be, you know, without the November ones. That's what I wanted to ask, you know, do we wanna let them, do we wanna make that wait till spring? Maybe better just to wait till spring.
Well, we don't know what the weather's gonna be next week. And how long it will take to get, get it burned down.
And you get it going, and then you got smoked for several days, because that's, especially if it gets wet in between, or wet through, so.
Climate did, does have a trick on the air quality thing that I never knew that was supposed to take, and that we were supposed to take into consideration, that when you do air quality, you can look and guesstimate it for the first two days of each week. So, then those two days, and when you're working on those two days and you already know what the color's gonna be, you can work on the next two days and work on those colors. You can do it to four days at a time, they said. I never knew that was even possible until today. So, I learned a lot while I was there, in just two hours, but it was quite a trip.
So, we still, we still okay with that if DEQ's in spirit?
Well, and see, that's another thing, is I can, they gave me all their cards. If I'm curious of what the color's gonna be like, then I can call them, and they'll, they'll give me the right direction. But they, Peter Bure also stated, DEQ's not here to just take us completely over, they just wanna move us in the right direction. So, if we do have a really horrible winter this year, and we do have more reds, don't get stressed out and worried. They just wanna help push us in the right direction so that we can continue to better the situation. That means people are gonna have to really abide by the vermin. And he's also gonna look into, because we do have the people that are down by the meter that have diesel trucks that are parking next to it and revving their engines, and he's gonna look into maybe possibly moving our site to a better site, so that we won't have that.
Yeah, there's probably the bus horns down that way too.
Yeah.
So, and it blows.
I did point that out too, because diesel's very cold, it's steamy.
But it's, it's the wood particular matter, and I think that's a whole different, but still, it's what we all breathe, so.
So, if we look at, check with DEQ, make sure that Department of Forestry complies with, you know, if it's really bad, or a storm's coming in, then they're not gonna be able to, that type of thing, is that okay? Should they be allowed?
I think it's okay, because I think that the Department of Environmental Quality and the Order of Department of Forestry have a very good working relationship, and so, I think that Dustin will make sure that he's not impairing our breathing, if at all possible, so, but I think we should allow them to. There's only a certain period that they can, like you say, and the more that that sits there and rots out, in case, they're really not able to later.
I can get it done this week, that'd be better.
Yeah, it would, if they can move forward, I don't know what their schedule is.
Maybe as soon as possible, and give them, you know, ten days.
Yeah, give them a window to, yeah, and dump LA is on the end of the season.
This is something I got from them today, that kind of, I'm just gonna pass it around and let them see it, and I'm only gonna copy.
Or would you just?
Yeah, I can do that, because there's actually a lot of stuff that you guys should be aware of.
So, everybody in agreement, go ahead and let them burn?
Okay. All right, and then a couple of other quick things. We've been going over, and I've been looking at this since I've been here, as far as switching from CenturyLink to the Spectrum for our phone lines and stuff. Just at Town Hall, which the only one we're looking at right now, we're gonna move to like the city shops, you know, water, you know, facilities or geothermal. If we go with them right now, we will save six thousand dollar a year. So, that's pretty good, and that's just this building, that's not looking at any other place.
That's phones and the town, the internet?
Phone lines and internet.
And internet for the, for this building?
Yep.
So, what about Department of Police Department and stuff like that?
Well, I've talked, you know, we've talked about it, but right now, CenturyLink is putting a substantial amount of money into dispatch and over there, and that probably is not the time to do it. You know, I mean, they're putting that, they put the two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and they're doing a couple other updates, so I don't think we even wanna touch that one right now, or what they're doing for us. But I'm thinking like our geothermal, you know, we have phone, internet in some of these buildings to contact, you know, us if something goes down, if the geothermal's not working, if, you know, and phone systems. And so, I would like to look at that and get a quote from them, but I thought we could start with Town Hall, if that was all right, that we could just move forward and do.
Well, and we may be obstructed by the state and Office of Emergency Management in the CAD, room down at the ESD, our Emergency Services Building, because the landlines are most important there, where Spectrum is using their own lines and not landlines, so, for ops and all.
Well, I don't think that we'd ever be able to change the nine-one-ones.
That's what I'm saying, I think that that's, that's a landline.
Like, the police, like my department phones and all of those, we might be able to separate those. You know, there is basically two phone systems over there. There's the nine-one-one emergency phone system that Charter, you know, I don't know how that's all contracted, Scott would have those answers that I don't. But they, they maintain, they repair, they do all of that for that nine-one-one system, and I think that's mostly paid for out of federal and state money.
It is.
And then, we've got our phone system, that's my desk, my patrol officer's desk, you know, that's, that's a whole different system. So, I think we could move one away, and I know that we looked at it at one point in the past, and it was gonna be a substantial savings over there too, probably about the same amount, you know, six thousand dollars a year. I mean, the only thing that I would be somewhat concerned with Charter with, that I just went through at home, is they gave you great prices for a year, and then they doubled. And so, as long as they don't do that, and even that might still be a savings, but.
Yeah, if it doubled, it'd still save us some money, well, it was, but anyway, I'll make sure on that, but if it's all right, I would proceed.
Has the power on that price is good for?
Yeah.
Have, have we checked with CenturyLink to tell them that we're perhaps moving services because of cost and see if they would come back with another proposal?
I think maybe when it was approached in the past, it may have happened.
Well, they give us a six thousand dollar break a year, same here.
I can't imagine, what do we have down here, three or four lines?
Well, actually, seven total.
Oh, is there seven total lines, okay, so there's, okay, all right, I didn't realize.
I vote, but I will double check on if CenturyLink's gonna give us it, you know?
Right, awful high.
That's a lot of.
Even a savings is that amount from what your charter's, so.
No, we don't need those, did they just never been set up? Phones have never been set up.
Oh, that's hilarious.
Yeah.
Spectrum will do the whole service work that needs to be done and stuff?
Right, yeah, and our phone system, we thought we needed a new phone system, but that phone system has never been set up the way that we have. We got it from Costco, and it's just never the same. So, we should be fine with our phones.
That's like in Penantia, to plug in and write out.
Well, yeah, anyway, so that was just, if, if it's okay, I'd like to move forward.
Yeah, move forward.
Yeah, but I will check with the others, so, okay.
Looks like we have an executive session coming in, so we'll close this meeting at four fifty, and then we'll go into our.